We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
This is Melissa.
Here.
Ms. Burnett?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Pickering?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Siff?
Here.
They will stand for the pledge.
I would like to make note of executive session,
March 28, 2022, for personnel, and April 19, 2022, for contract negotiations and student discipline. At this time, is there any public comment regarding tonight's agenda? I'd like to make note of executive session, March 28, 2022, for personnel, and April 19, 2022, for contract negotiations and student discipline. At this time, is there any public comment regarding tonight's agenda? Then we'll move on to student representatives to the board. Cockrington Junior Senior High School, Zoe Hanson and Kendall Rose.
All right, so our boys volleyball team holds a region record of 3-1. They lost to Meadville last week. However, they play Cambridge Springs on Tuesday and Sagertown on Thursday this week. Although our baseball team lost to Youngsville this past Saturday, they play Rocky Grove on Tuesday, Youngsville again on Wednesday, and Cambridge Springs on Saturday. The boys' overall record stands at 4-3. Our softball team had a win against Maplewood on Friday. They play Youngsville tomorrow, Eisenhower on Thursday, and Cranberry on Friday. The girls' overall record is 4-2. Cockrington's National Honor Society chapter is beginning to do some volunteer work at the Adams Place, prepping for the induction ceremony and are fundraising with flower vouchers. And our NTMA club is continuing to prepare for their national competition that takes place on May 20 and 21. We're still fundraising for the American Heart Association by doing a series of small projects to gather change and other bills. We're doing pay-to-play in the cafeteria and a competition to see which teachers can raise the most money. Two of our teachers have agreed to bleach their hair if they get $600 in their bucket.
Thank you. Meadville Area Senior High School, Kate Emili and Megan Willis.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Starting out, our student government is putting on a Teachers Appreciation Week next week. Each day, a student will share a story about when a teacher did something memorable for them, and then along with showing a compilation of a teacher waving. And those will both be recorded and put on the announcements each day. And then we have some other activities associated with that. For our sports, our boys volleyball team has moved to 7-0 on the season. Their next game will be tomorrow at home against Fort LeBeuf. Our softball team hosted a doubleheader this past Saturday against Villarreal and Sharon. And the Bulldogs lost the first game to Villa 6-0, but battled back to beat Sharon 7-6. Their season record moves to 1-4. Our lacrosse team is currently 4-3 on the season, and they have a game tonight at Butler. Hopefully, they're not getting rained on too hard. But the boys and girls track team are both 2-0, and their next meet is tomorrow at home, and it's a dual meet with Oil City.
The school musical "When in Rome" was a success. It had three showings, one on Friday, April 22, and two on Saturday, the 23rd. The cast was comprised of both MASH and MAM students. Our dodgeball tournament was also a success that we did throughout the school. The senior team, Ball of Duty, went undefeated against the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes. And at the end of the day, they beat the teachers in the tournament finals. And lastly, we have the AP exams coming up, beginning on Monday, May 2, and ending on the May 13. Students are preparing to work hard and do the best that they can on their tests. And that's all we got for you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. And last, Meadville Area Middle School, Chelsea Osterkamp and Isabella Thorson. All right, then, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes: Regular Board Meeting of March 28, 2022; Special Board Meeting of April 4, 2022; Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 19, 2022; and New Board Member Candidate Interviews of April 22, 2022. Before I ask for a motion, we want to add on to the new Board Candidate Interviews under others in attendance, Zephaniah and Chapman. And I need a motion.
So who?
Who was that?
Kevin and Melissa.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to committee reports, and we're going to start off with acceptance of the resignation of the Board Member Elise Palmer. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby accepts the resignation of Board Member Elise C. Palmer effective March 28, 2022. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Jeff, and a second?
No, Kevin.
Oh, Kevin, again?
Kevin.
Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints John Amato to fill the vacancy on the Board of School Directors created by the resignation of Elise C. Palmer. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Jeff?
So moved.
Brian? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I think you're going to read this vote.
John Amato, will he be sworn in?
Yes, I don't think he's sworn in.
And if you raise your hand? Aye, John Amato.
Aye, John Amato.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support, obey, and defend.
That I support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, John. Okay, we are now moving on to curriculum. Melissa Burnett?
Yes. I resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the second and final reading of the following curriculum: Boots 1, 2, and 3, grades 9 through 12 at Cockrington Junior Senior High. HTML and web design, web page design, grades 10 through 12 at the Meadville Area Senior High School. There's been no revision since the first reading, and I so move.
In a second, please. Thank you, Ryan. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the dual enrollment agreement with Northwestern Regional College for the 2022-23 school year. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, Kevin, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to building and grounds. Brian Miller, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule K, number 457, the refuse/ removal bids for 2022 through 2024. And I so move.
In a second, please. Melissa, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Food service, Stillwood Smith, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the 2022-23 budget for the nutrition. There's an attachment. You can look over, and I so move.
In a second, please.
Aye.
Thank you, Holly. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves increase the price of lunch to $2.75 and breakfast to $1.25 beginning with the 2022-23 school year. And I so move.
In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Finance, Jeff Rose, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: The Treasurers Report for March, financial statements, and the payment of bills. And I so move.
In a second, please.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the 2022-23 Crawford Central Career and Technical Center budget. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, Kevin, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule L budgetary transfers. And I so move.
In a second, please.
Second.
Kevin? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that school tax collectors of respective municipalities listed below having made a full and proper settlement in accordance with the law of the taxes levied by the Crawford Central School District for the fiscal year 2021 through 22 should be collected by him or her by paying over all taxes collected, by returning all unpaid taxes upon real property to Crawford County Tax Plan Bureau or other appropriate authorities, and by having received various exonerations and credits Crawford Central School District does hereby exonerate said tax collectors for all unpaid taxes for the tax year 2021 in his or her action in returning appropriate taxes to the appropriate authorities to be approved subject to audit. This exoneration is concluded upon final approvals of the auditor, solicitor, and business manager for the Crawford Central School District. And I so move.
Second.
Kevin, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that pursuant to Act 23 of 2008, the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Guy W. O'Neill Business Manager as the Tax Collection Committee Primary Voting Delegate for the Crawford Central School District. And further resolved that the Board hereby reappoints Phyllis Lord, Assistant Business Manager, as the Tax Collection Committee Alternate Voting Delegate for the Crawford Central School District. And further resolved that the primary voting delegate cannot attend a Tax Collection Committee meeting, then the alternate voting delegate shall attend the Tax Collection Committee meeting. The reappointment of Mr. O'Neill and Mrs. Lord as delegates are effective immediately and shall continue until their successors are appointed. Delegates shall be appointed or reappointed by the Board each year. All delegates shall serve at the pleasure of the Board, and I so move.
In a second, please. Thank you, Melissa. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to personnel. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the second and final reading of the revisions to Policy 249, bullying, cyberbullying. No revisions have been made since the first reading, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin? And a second?
A second.
And Holly? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the waiver and stipulation involving student D, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin? And Jeff? Jeff?
Kevin.
Kevin. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules: A, C, D, E, G, H, I, and M. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Ryan and Holly?
Melissa.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Washington.
Sure, and I'm just going to have a quick PowerPoint we want to share with the Board. When we were talking about the budget, Kevin had asked this question about the set aside, that is, for tutoring. And so I wanted to, we were going to talk about it that night, but we never got back to it. So we were, so Dr. Noonan is going to try to project here. She just needs to get the code to put into her computer. And we're just going to share a quick PowerPoint that we've been working on as a team in terms of the set aside. Now, the set aside means that part of the money that came from the federal government, the $8 million that, right? A part of it has to be set aside. And that part that has to be set aside has to go towards closing the gap for students, okay? So this is the ARPESO, Addressing the Pandemic Impact. And so we just want to, Dr. Noonan and I both will be going back and forth on this presentation because it also involves some data gathering, so she's going to share some of that stuff. So when we, when we looked at indicators, some of the things that we need to address in order to close the gap as a result are the academic impact of the loss of instructional time. That's obvious. Chronic absenteeism, student engagement, the socio-emotional well-being of students, and other indicators. So we're going to get into that a little bit deeper. So as we started moving forward, the vision for the next two years, while we have this, this funds is reinventing and restoring what was lost during the pandemic, okay? And that's what we're looking at, and it's going to come from our survey. So when you look at the funds, it was approximately, if you break it down per student, it was about $2,500 per student. That's what, that's what that amounted to us for our district, okay? The $8 million. So, so we have over a two-year period of time to try to do that. So we want to keep in mind that we have third graders who have been interrupted since the beginning of kindergarten, right? They did online, they were at home, they had all sorts of things that, that interrupted their process for them, okay? So, Dr. Noonan. So what we did was, in order to engage some of the stakeholders, we had, we've, we've been working with our strategic plan committee sessions. We've gotten their input, the ESA Community Survey. Dr. Noonan is responsible for doing Title I surveys. We've used that. We have talked to the folks at Systems of Care. Every month, we meet with all of the agencies in the county. We get together, mental health, all the school districts, probation, all of the folks that serve our youth. We get together once a month, and we, we talk about things that impact our youth, and we did a survey there. We use that Pennsylvania Youth Survey, as well as informal conversations that, that we have with parents and teachers. So the next slide. So as a part of one of the results of the survey, and Dr. Noonan, you, you did some of this for me, so I'm going to turn it over to you so you can talk about some of the results.
This was the community survey that was held and the results. One of the questions asked community individuals to identify five items that they consider to be the top priority when looking at how to spend our money. This is the top priority as identified by our stakeholders, including community teachers. This was distributed, the survey was widely distributed. Provide social, emotional, and mental health opportunities such as counseling, mental health, wellness resources for students, staff, and families. So that was the top priority. The second of the three priorities that we'll look at today stated that folks were interested in delivering interventions for students needing additional support and small group instruction. So that was the second priority. And the third one that we saw from our, our survey had to do with engaging families, whether it be attendance, support, classes, resources, other activities for families.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I see there was only 59 participants.
In that survey.
So who, who was, like, surveyed in that group?
We had teachers that responded, we had community members that responded.
They were just put out and no, and that's all you got back?
It was on Facebook, it was, there was an email message. It was sent to all of our staff. And that was one, I mean, we also heard the same thing from the groups that Mr. Washington talked about.
Right, so our monthly meeting, the SOC. So not to cut you off, or Kevin, what we hear a lot of is meeting the mental health of our youth. It is also one of the things that we hear a lot. Well, I'm not questioning. Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying. Well, I'm just questioning, only 59 responded to this particular thing, so I'm kind of questioning how many people actually had the input, but it was put out, we just didn't get the responses back.
Right, and, and this next slide really talks about our local strategies based on all of the conversations, the different groups that were referenced previously. One was the impact of lost instructional time. That was one of our top strategies that we're looking to address with this money, mental and social well-being of students and staff, and student and family engagement. So I want to go through each of those. I reference, think about those as buckets, if you will, of what we're doing with, with the allocation. So the academic impact of lost instructional time, specifically, we're looking at learning loss and recovery, learning loss. So providing after-school and summer programming, looking at materials and resources for ELA, English Language Arts, and math instruction during the after-school and summer. We're going to do, be doing a summer learning lab at the elementary level, and credit recovery, and online learning at the secondary. Continuity of services, there's money in our grant to cover the cost of 28 teachers. We've been working through our strategic plan. One of our pillars is Portrait of a Graduate. That particular pillar is asking folks to think about our CCSD graduate and what are the skills and dispositions so that as we move forward with things such as curriculum writing revisions, that we are able to address those skills and dispositions. We've included money for professional development for teachers. We're also looking at an initiative to build capacity for, for staff in the area of reading instruction, specifically looking at the science of reading and looking at online class opportunities for students.
Yeah, so can I just jump into strengthening? So the, the building of, of capacity for the staff on the science of reading is working with a program called Step-by-Step. Teaching reading is a very complicated thing. And as we know, know and learn more about the brain, we understand how, exactly how complicated it is. And so we know that these youngsters in K through 3 need to be caught up. And some of that is going to be understanding the science of reading and how reading acquisition happens in the brain, as well as understanding. The other part that we want to start working on is that we have been talking about, and we need to start to move towards having our own online classes taught by our teachers. And so that is what we, part of what we're trying to do. If you remember back to the vision, reimagining and reinventing things. There's some things we need to reinvent that we learned from the pandemic, such as can we offer kids online classes taught by our teachers, right? And fit that into their schedule, as well as the kid's schedule, as a part of a blended hybrid model for students. Sometimes they don't need to sit there for eight periods a day, right? Sometimes they can do, they can be in, in an online scenario and then, you know, be in the building. But we want to look at those opportunities that we can start to build our system towards having those opportunities for our kids.
I could be misremembering here, but did we have a little bit of pushback from the union on that?
No, I think the union is on board. I don't want to speak for the union president, but I think we have been having chats about how we can, we can come together as administration and teachers and talk about how we can have online learning for, for our students, but handled by our teachers. So I just wanted to talk about how we're looking at trying to strengthen that. How do we reinvent some of the things that we're constantly doing to meet the needs of our kids who are going out into the world? Anne?
Our second bucket has to do with mental and social well-being of staff and students. We want to expand our mental health services, adding counselors, being able to fund that with this, and also explore web-based resources, such as parentguidance.org. I'm just going to jump out to that. This is a free website, there's also a paid portion of this, but this is something that Mr. Washington founded, AASA, with, it's a resource that's out there for parents to be able to do in their home, courses that are offered to parents. And I just want to scroll down so you get an opportunity.
Why don't you jump out there and see if you can get out there? While she's jumping out there, what I found was a resource for parents. And a lot of times, 71%, when I went to this conference, 71% of parents rely on school districts to do the mental health work. So parents often struggle with how to talk to their child about depression, how to talk to their child about suicide, how to talk, those various topics, right? This resource will allow us, this part is free. We will attach this to our website. Parents will be able to go there, and they will be able to take a 30-minute class on how to talk to your child about depression, how to talk to your child if they're drinking, those types of things, how to have those conversations. At the same token, we are going to buy the paid portion, which will then allow the parent to meet with a psychologist or a psychiatrist, to go deeper in their training. And they offer, once a quarter, topics that you can join. So Anne is just going to show you just what these types of classes are offered, what we'll be offering to our parents.
I'm going to scroll down, you can see the topics. I don't want to make you dizzy here, but here's the, the library by topic. So anxiety, bullying, busyness, frustration. There are a number of topics that are available that parents can select to take a look at the courses and the resources offered by Parent Guidance.org. Let me go back to the PowerPoint. The other thing that we'll be doing is professional development around mental and social well-being for, for students and staff with the funding from ESTER. And then the last bucket has to do with student and family engagement. First part of this are classroom amplification systems. We have been using Red Cats. It's like a little microphone, speaker and a microphone that the teacher wears for articulation. It helps students to be able to hear better. We have those in K-2, they've reached their end of life, and input from teachers was that, that would be something that they would like to have replaced. So for student engagement, we're looking at Red Cats. Professional development opportunities as well in this bucket, if you will, expanding parent and family engagement workshops as part of our pillar for the strategic plan. There's a school and parent engagement pillar. We have been selected to be part of Parents as Allies. It is a group that is being run through Kidsburg. We're one of about 30 districts that are part of this. We have parents that are on our design team that are providing us input to create programming for families within our district. Something else that was asked by teachers was multimedia creation for students, letting them do voice and choice specifically in the secondary. So we've put some money in for that. We wanted to equip classrooms with interactive technology. We had a committee of teachers, Mr. Price and I worked with them to look at options that were out there for interactive technology in the classroom. And the consensus was to move toward the ViewSonic Interactive Board. And so there's money in the budget for the interactive technology for, for classrooms.
So part of this is reinventing, and that you see[1761.18] So part of this is reinventing, and that you see is the technology piece for the classroom, the piece for online, reinventing some of the things that we want to do that way. Also, reimagining how we engage parents. What we learned in the pandemic is that we have to change the way we try to engage parents, and it always seems to be that we approach parents from the idea that, you know, what can you do for us? Now we have to be, what we learned in the pandemic is that we have to listen to parents more and work harder with parents, and so that, that engagement piece that Dr. Noonan was talking about and being a part of our strategic plan is that how do we engage, how do we work in our organization to reimagine how we engage parents? Do, I'll give you a prime example. Do parent-teacher conferences always have to be at night? Or just in the, in the afternoon? Can they be by Zoom? Can they be by Skype? Things we've learned, you know? So that's reinventing and reimagining what we, what we were talking about. So I just wanted to bring that back to the Board, because we had talked about it, Kevin, when we, when we mentioned it, and we forgot to bring, we didn't go back there because of the discussion, so that, that is, I just wanted to share with, with folks, so that is my report, unless there are any questions. And if you have any questions, please stop and see me, talk to me. Thank you.
All right, then we will move on to public comments, and I believe we have one request by Amy Oviet.
Hello, Amy Oviet, living in Meville, three kids that go to the school. I'm going to start with just telling you all about my third grade teacher, Mrs. Marucci. The reason why I'm bringing her up, because she was a teacher that whenever I talk about teachers, she's the first one that pops in my mind, and the reason is because, excuse me, there was a girl in my class, and she was very poor. She lived in a shack, had dirty hair, had dirty clothes, stunk, and that teacher pulled her aside and bought her a brush, hair ties, deodorant, and gave her a drawer. And that's what our teacher would want to be. Our teachers want to be a Mrs. Marucci. They come to teach, they come to care, and right now, that's not happening in our classrooms. I have two sources for my information. Since the pandemic, behaviors in the classroom have been on the rise and show no signs of slowing down. Teachers and educators across the country are dealing with more behavioral challenges in the classroom than ever before. This should be alarming to every parent, teacher, and administrator, especially after what just happened at Erie High School. In a recent survey by Education Advisory Board, 81% of our school administrators indicate the frequency of disruptive behaviors in their schools is either more or significantly more than during the previous three years. 71% of teachers responded the same way and estimated they lose an average of 144 minutes of instructional time per week due to behavioral interruptions in the classroom. I am aware class sizes are the same or close to the sizes 10 to 20 years ago. However, there are not anywhere near the amount of behaviors there are today, or stress of mandates and standardized testing. No behavioral challenges are the same in their cause or manifestation, and this leaves teachers with countless behavioral challenges to navigate. A common factor among many students exhibiting behavioral challenges is an inability to communicate effectively. This only becomes worse the older the students get, since the teachers are unable to teach in the classroom, social, or teach, teach the students correct social behaviors in the classroom anymore. There's simply no time. Communication and self-expression are fundamental human needs. Not being able to meet those needs can create an enormous amount of pressure and prevent a student from being able to learn and cooperate. The biggest mistake made in schools is educators and administrators waiting for a situation to escalate before they act. Our primary students are not getting the help they need with behavioral and social issues, and those are being carried on to the secondary level, which is causing more explosive and violent behaviors. My kids have witnessed violence in the elementary and middle school multiple times this year. Test scores are down and violence is up, and children are crying on couches of social workers. Anger is rising, impatience is falling. For public schools, enrollment is down, absenteeism is up, remote learning and disruptions to a dependable routine have left our students behind, especially students of color and those from poor families. Behavioral problems ranging from an inability to focus in class all the way to deadly violence in schools. Many students and teachers are emotionally drained, and experts predict schools will be struggling from this for years to come. An eighth grade teacher from Philadelphia said that in her 11 years of schooling, she has never referred as many kids to counseling as she had in one year. How many wonder, she says, how deep is the damage to our kids? A high school teacher from Kansas said the overall feeling of teachers right now are ones of being exhausted, beaten down, and defeated, just out of gas. Expectations have been piled up on educators even before the pandemic, but nothing has ever been removed. Many students have shifted to private or charter schools due to the lack of education and increased behaviors in our public schools. They interfere with their learning. They also left during the pandemic because they wanted in-school learning. Private and charter schools offers, offer smaller class sizes and are able to focus on the needs of the students. Schools are now open for in-person learning, and the students have returned emotionally unsettled and unable to conform to normally accepted behavior. Teachers are seeing kids who can't focus in class and can't figure out how to interact with other students in the normal ways, and teachers are seeing this in younger kids and primary levels as low as kindergarten. The loss of interpersonal skills has led to more fighting in school. Teachers and principals say many incidents escalate from small disputes because students lack the ability to remain calm. Many say the social isolation brought on from the pandemic and remote learning has left our kids with lower capacity to manage human conflict. Where's the fight and the passion for our kids? That's why you're here. Last month, Mr. Merritt said, "For the people of French Creek." Shouldn't we just try for them? Can't we just try for our kids? Don't they deserve it? Why can't we have smaller class sizes mandatory for the next two years? And let these teachers become the Mrs. Marucci they wanted to be? That's why they wanted to teach, to get in there and care, and to get in there and teach those kids. And these teachers can't do that right now, but they want to. So give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Great. Any other public comments? Board comments? Seeing no other comments, be it resolved, that being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:06 PM, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin? Second? Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.